Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the WNESU School Board Meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the chairman of the Goodwin Division Advisory Board, Mr. Mark Biese, the advisory board tonight, Wendy Jacob, at Bell's Community High School. So the meeting is called the Board of six-year-old Board, and we'll do a quick round of introductions, especially for the public who doesn't necessarily know who's at the table. Sarah Dorn.
Sure. My name is Sarah Dorn. I am the director of Anthony's School and Summer Programs.
And as Anthony said, with these machines going in the room, everybody.
Do you want me to do it again?
At least all hours are wearing your masks, particularly. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everybody.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Stacy Alexander, Director for Student Services.
You know, I'll begin with finance.
Aaron Landron, Westminster School Board.
Like that, the Bell's High School School Board, representing.
Kathy C. Goodwin, Chair of the Grafton School Board, and I'm the.
Andy Haas, Superintendent Schules.
I'll show Charles, Chair of the Westford Board, Chair of the S U.
Crystal Lambert, representing Rockingham and.
Jim McColl, representing Rockingham, from the Rockingham School Board.
Jason Terry, representing Rockingham on the Bell's Community High School Board.
And unwinds, we start, Hardy.
Hardy Merrill, Athens Grafton School Board, representing Grafton.
Thank you. Has there any adjustments to the agenda? See, no, are there any communications and public comment? If we're the chief, then I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from September to one.
Still move.
Still move, Mr. Paul. Here are a couple of on-group of you, just type up names. Okay, yeah, there are. On the times we don't bring the typos forward, but rather anything extensive, like Mr. Haas' name is spelled. That's an example. Ask them what, yeah, so they're. I think some of you have a.
Yes, under eight, see, where it talks about review and approved policies, it should be noted that policies will approve, those policies will approve on August.
Okay. So that's a clarification.
I'm pretty sure I said that that night because we talked about those two and they had already been approved, which we did not vote officially, see, or do any of that.
Taking the day, actually, as soon as chair is probably picking it up, there's a third as well.
And it would have been in two minutes, seven, three, that week.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes? And let's take a vote on that since we're just first here. Hardy, how do you want to go? Only four minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. Might make the rest of us, we can just sit and ask by saying, oh, I have a time to vote. The minutes are approved. They'll vote to your votes, and we'll begin with the superintendent.
So I send out an update on my goals that we have, but also just try to add things in if it went along and that. And I know we have other people doing presentations, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights. Just to let everyone know, we continue our work with New Solutions, TA12. They're solving, who's helping us, work on scheduling and how effectively we maximize our schedule to benefit our students, both the middle school and the high school. And so this last week, we met with them as a guiding coalition team, went over steps that we've done, the team from New Solutions that met with individual folks. And then we will be meeting with them later in November, where they can pile all of their work and bring some recommendations forward. So those recommendations will help inform both the middle school administration, the high school administration, and how they might be able to offer interventions for students and possibly how we can streamline some of our courses. So we're excited about that work. And then also, just kind of thinking of some big things, tomorrow, all of our second and third graders, all of our four elementary schools will be going to Miller Farm, headed for a kickoff of our organic milk program that Harley Sterling and Missy have been instrumental in bringing to us. So that's the program where we get organic milk and pulp. And kids K through 12 have access, preschool actually, have access to it. And so we don't serve them in little containers, in little paper containers that no one's ever opened anyway. So they have a glass, they can drink something if they want, but it's, they kind of call it a powder, powder stew program. It's again, within a day or two, it's a thousand available. And so I believe the secondary agriculture is going to be in attendance. The kids are going to go down and be able to see some of the cows and hang out somewhere along. I've lunched down there, I'm going to farm, something like that. So we're looking forward to that. We're really excited about it. And then we're continuing to work on. Sorry, I lost my place there. We're continuing to work on capital improvement plans as we work through, finishing up into our third part of our Esther of grants. And so the Art Esther is the last of our grants, but we have one more here. That is the big one for our capital improvements. And so besides the capital improvement plans that we have going, we also are looking at other local funding links. The big piece with the capital improvements with this building, what we're shouting, was the PCBs that were defected before school started. A few weeks ago, we had a second test done, once we put the units in, a drastic reduction in our numbers across the school. The academic area came down below 100, school action level. It was just two areas that were still at 100. And then the gymnasium. They were almost at 900. They, without machines in there or anything, came down to just over 100. And so hypothesis there is that as the building's being used, more fresh air moving in and out of the building, but also the testing that was initially done is done in July, one of the hottest and humid, most humid days. And so that may have affected the op-gassing. So we just finished a third test this week. And so they're doing a rush on the results, but hopefully get those results within a week. If those results are consistent with the second one, we are very optimistic that we will regain access to the gymnasium and the auditorium and be able to use it. We're not going to be able to get rid of the machines just yet, so we're going to still endure those. We've turned them down to 50%. Right now in this room, they're at 50%. We're able to turn them down to 50% during the academic day, turn them up at night. So, but we were also given the green light to start moving ahead with our master projects here at this building. Because we had put everything on hold, so it's not a lot of, well, not knocking any holes in the ceiling or anything of that nature. We had, well, we were getting the bids and that kind of stuff. And that takes time. And so that's the bigger piece that we have to work on. So we were really excited about being able to move forward on that because we've got a lot of money that we were going to invest in this building, and we want to move forward with that. So then. With another big piece that we pushed out is site for our strategic plan to try and get some feedback from community parents, students, and teachers. We had an access problem in the community, so we fixed that access problem, so there shouldn't be any issues with community being able to access it. We had a great turnout actually from our students. We had 150 students actually take the survey, which is really good. And we asked seven through eight grade. So, pardon me.
No, we actually asked six. Two plus.
Six through 12, because we wanted to capture students at Grafton and at Westford Street. So we're going to keep that open for a while, but try and generate some more. We'll be having some focus groups that are being pushed out. We're going to be looking, trying to some Zoom, some in-person, so that we can try and capture people who want to come in person, just to get that feedback. And then the other piece that we're looking to launch is we're going to be having a superintendent advisory group. We were optimistic and wanting to have a parent group, a teacher group, a student group. A little ambitious, so we pared that down to one group right now to start. And so we're still looking, if people are interested, we're still taking applications. This group just needs that we can have an open dialogue with folks and share ideas and things coming up and using the sounding board, but also hear what we don't always hear. And I'm sure Mr. Fazita is going to go over this a little bit, but we can continue to move forward with the launch of Infinite Visions and that product and how that's actually helping us quite a bit. You know, I know that Jim and his team have spent countless hours. Jim's hair is a little thinner these days.
It's hard to.
But, you know, we're really excited about the reports we were able to get out and work. And then the other piece is this other tool called the Frontline, which is replacing our subs online and will replace our time machines that we do with our staff. So all of that is looking to kind of launch in November, so the subs online will launch in November. The subs piece of Frontline will launch in November, and then the time sheet will come a little bit after that. All of that is done to streamline the work behind the scenes that people don't see, which is in Jim's office, the amount of human labor that goes into payroll. The Frontline product that's designed, pocketed, in visions, and then streamline all that so that there's not a lot of hand and brain data that's. Those are, I think, the big points that I can, there's one other that I just remembered that's not in the report that I think I have to bring up. So this week, we learned from the AOE with Title, our Title Grants. Those are our federal consolidated grants. They run a test, which is called Maintenance of Effort. And Maintenance of Effort is done to show that the district or the LEA, so that's all of us, are continuing to maintain a budget and use the budget that we say we're going to use and not just use federal monies made for everything. It's done also under IDEA in a different format, but it's done that way. So they run a test and for, and they ran a test for fiscal year '22 versus fiscal year '21, going back a few years. We failed. And we failed because we budgeted and spent less money in fiscal year '22 than we did in fiscal year '21. And you're only allowed 10% difference. So every year, you're only supposed to, you can only spend 10% less than the year before. So efforts to try and really trim and save money, actually, people back to hurt us. This is the first time that I'm aware of us running a, them running a Maintenance of Effort on Title, but they look at the whole S U, all of our budget, all of our expenditures. We had a meeting yesterday with them. We have to go back. There might, there's most likely going to be an opportunity for us to look at the data and argue pieces of it, put everyone in perspective. FY '21 is 2020, 2021 year. That is the first year back after the lockdown. And so there was also a lot of, we had coding errors going on during that time. At the beginning, we had changed all of their codes during that time as well. And then, so there's potential in '21 that those expenditures were not coded correctly, so that's why they're so high. But then in '22, to remind everybody of what happened in fiscal year '22, that was the year that Mr. Frapp resigned, that Ms. Carey, or Dr. Carey resigned, that Ms. Pagan resigned, and we lost quite a bit of administrative staff during that time, where Ms. Alexander took over my position. We didn't fill her position. So there were a lot less administrative positions that we filled that year, partially because we had already done. So when we posed that to the state, they said, those are all the good reasons we need to go back and look at it. Once we look at it, if we still have not gotten to that 90%, we're at 86.5. Put it in perspective, we're at 86.5, so we have a 9.5%. We can still apply for a waiver with the federal government. If we are granted the waiver, that's great. You cannot just use COVID as your excuse, so you have to present a case around it. The big piece, just to note the board, is with Maintenance of Effort, if you fail two times in a five-year period, after your second fail, your next year's title funds are reduced by the percentage of the failure. So in this case, if this was our second time, our title fund next year would be reduced by the 3.5%. Well, 86.5, so that's, I misspoke, yes. So it's 3.5%. So we should be reduced by that. So the waiver is a good thing. It makes the state slate clean. And they're about to run FY '23, that test. So FY '23 versus FY '22, so we want to get it cleaned up because, you know, I don't believe we'll fail, but I don't want to have that chance. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of this.
Rather than taking questions for Andy now with his report, I'd like to suggest we go to Jim, and then with Stacy and Sarah. So we've got kind of an administrative reporter for all, and then just asking questions that you might have.
Go on. I want to start out by following Andy's. I just want to say that I'm somewhat disappointed with the Agency of Education Act. And I can say that as a reminder. I wish there was some good that came from all of this meeting, the MOE, and all of the rest of it. There's none. I want to pick up where there's, and I'll go through this quickly and then answer some questions. One question that I want to answer, Jim brought up Saxons River custodial. And Jim, that happened to have been 70% of Rick Schuman was charged there and not where he was supposed to be. We fixed it, we resolved. Here, seven lines down, you'll see there's a $435,000, $435 that's hanging out. That has to be fixed. I think it has something to do with the range. The range still stays, and she has not fixed that as yet. Page, and I just want to say, worker comp still is not fixed, still an issue, but we're working on it. We're going to get it resolved. And on page two, on the very bottom line, you'll see insurance workers' comp sped zero. It's an error. Page three, towards the top of the page, you'll see contracted services sped consulting. You'll see we're over budget. And don't want that to surprise anybody. I mean, we're certainly adjusting and looking at where we're over budget, where we're under budget, but certainly this is a sizable adjustment. Three lines down, five lines down, I think you'll see tuition sped private. And again, we're over budget, 369,000. If you want to just.
You can do it when you jump in here.
Yeah. I'm looking on page four, and you'll see psychological services, again, we're over 90,000. Speech. Speech is, well, actually, you know, the speech total is on page five, top of the, very top of the page five. And again, we're over 143,000. So. Page six, and I'm looking at staff development, which is 2212. And staff development, we're over right now by 30,000. And again, I think we've got a little bit of work to do in resolving the overages and the under. And what we're going to do is we will transfer eventually to see where we're really at. On page seven. School Board Services, it looks like we're in the good of 76 right now. And I just want to say, the one thing that I meant here is the audit. We budgeted 65. We have a $48,000 balance. And I think. That's on page seven, and in the middle, well, the middle of the page shows that you're to the good 76,000. The audit is maybe six lines down. And it shows 65,000.
Is this on page seven?
Page seven.
Next line stands from.
From the top.
Oh, I see. Yeah, 43, I get it.
So I think what happened with that, to get right in, is when we put the budget together, we didn't have an exact figure of what the audit was. We got them after. And I think there was some miscalculations there. Just want to mention on page eight. This is four of the way down. Yes. And so what we did, and again, this was, we started pre-K, regular ed pre-K. We had lines in here, and we have since moved them so that they're all going to Medicaid. So they're not, we're not picking any of the cost up right now for the regular ed pre-K. So we're moving that out as well. Page nine, and I'm looking at Special Ed Administration, we're 34,000 over. Again, we've got a few more adjustments that we've got to do for that. And that's a quarter of the way down. Okay. I'm looking at Fiscal Services, we're 16,000 in the hole. And again, I think I had mentioned at one time. In putting last year's, this year's budget together last year, didn't have a concept of having the replaced. Now, we brought in somebody because we need to certainly train and have somebody stepping in. And Andy will eventually advertise and try to solicit somebody. And I will say this, they don't make us anymore. And when I say that, the school district, South Windham, is it South Windham?
He means southeast.
Southeast Windham.
Yeah, right row.
No, no, the one over in Central. What is it?
Windham Central.
Windham, right? There's still opening for a position that they've been advertising for. It hasn't been filled as yet. And so.
Windham Southwest.
Windham Southwest. Thank you. So, I mean, they're still advertising and have been for six months. So we certainly don't want to gamble. We're going to train as much as we can, understanding that. Andy will do what he needs to do to fill that void. But we have brought in somebody that's incredible and stepping into the payroll piece, just awesome. So there's still people out there, good people. I think the last one that I have is page 11, three quarters of the way down, Transportation. And you'll see that right now, we're in the hole, 85,000. We knew we were going to be because we purchased a lease for 167,000. So we knew we were going to be in the hole. I think that's about it right now. What can I answer for questions? As they say, the thing that, with the new accounting financial system, at least it's going to get you on solid ground. And we're still in the process of converting over. I think, two weeks ago, I think they brought in all of the past days that people had that needed to be brought into the system. And I think that's done. I think we're certainly tweaking and fixing some of the errors that were done in the conversion. But it's a process. I was talking to somebody else who was going through that very same thing. And I said, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have stepped back, paid $150,000, and somebody had stolen? Wow. So there's a marketing out there for somebody who wants to step in there.
Some of these ones are pretty significant. Yes, their answers are retake that. Somebody's, which are pretty significant, yes, the variances, are we taking that stuff or is that a plot and that we shouldn't depend on these numbers?
No. We know, and Stacy's going to speak to some of the deficits. And again, when you have, I mean, it's like this always in, in districts. If you have a car where mom has moved into, mom and dad have moved into a district. And there's some substantial. Needs with the students. Where you have some autistic kids, autistic children, and cause you, cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, done. And I say that, that's probably on the low side. Because if, and I have a granddaughter who's autistic, non-communication, non-verbal, and. Sometimes it takes two parents to be with her all day. Now, parent's forty thousand dollars, so that's eighty thousand just for that piece. You never know.
All right, I get two to the man's.
Just two quick items, one is, obviously, we're not seeing the revenue, we're not going to spend time on that, I don't think. Clearly, in the special ed area, we'll get some help with revenue. But I think clear message is that almost across the board, we're over budget. And I think Andy and his staff have got a challenge to, even this early in the year, to say, hey, look, we've got to really manage this budget to try to keep. Our, our programs going, but. But it's helped out in reducing this deficit that we appear we're going to definitely have.
Yes, yeah.
Could I make a couple of comments here? I took a look at the numbers too, and if I add up all of the variances on the special ed, psychological service, speech, occupational, et cetera. That's in the hole, it says four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And I know that our block grant is down by ninety-one thousand dollars, so that total is five hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Now, the one thing that I see that mitigates that a little bit is when we did our assessment, we charged special ed for two million, three, three, nine, seven, forty-five, and if you add that all together. It comes up to three fifty-four, oh, eighty-three, so we're really in the hole about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now. So I think we're also going to get some of that back because of these. Special ed people that we just talked about, because I think there's a cap on what we have to spend there before we get some money back, and I'm not familiar with what that is, so I don't know what the implications of that are. But that's sort of putting into perspective where we are on special ed right now.
All right, thank you, Ruby. Just, um, just as a follow-up, that's basically, that's basically part of what I was going to ask is, what is your best guess? Are we going to come up pretty close? Are we really looking at having to try to cut? What, what is your best guess?
Just a guess. I think you're going to have a substantial deficit that will have to be assessed back.
Any idea, like, a guess on how, what you're talking about?
No.
We said too much, asked too early in the year.
But I think there are some lines in what Jim is showing you that I have questions about, that I, what I know from what I have hired and what I'm citing those for don't match that's in there. And so there's, you know, especially in speech, like, there's some areas I want to look at, what's being put in where, and make sure that things are where they're supposed to be, and shouldn't be somewhere else, so.
I actually think Stacy, it's time to go to you.
Okay.
Unless it's Stacy, we want to ask the question now. I was just thinking.
Uh, I can ask Jim later. What's your pleasure?
It's fine, go ahead.
Is it specific to special ed or not?
No.
Then go ahead.
Did you say you're retiring?
Huh?
Are you retiring?
Well, next, I'm gonna get Andy through.
Some time in the future. Are you leaving us at some point, or?
Yes, yes, I am.
We have a driver's ed position open at the high school. And can, can you just tell me on page one, the subs?
Yes.
Hard time hearing you. Are we also over budget on the subs?
I don't think you're going to be, but the thing that I wanted to bring up with the subs, thank you for bringing it up, is we talked about, see, right now, all the subs come back to the SU. And the reason we do that and have done that for the past years is a sub can, can go for all five entities. They can be a sub for them. And so we've got to set up FICA, Worker Comp, all of the tax stock for any particular sub. So we talked about, instead of bringing it into the SU and filling it back out. We talked about whether we should bring it into the SU and assess for the subs. Just as a smarter, easier way to handle that. So I, I know that it's not going to be resolved tonight, but love to be able to have that considered in the future.
Thank you. Just one more, and so everyone else answered my question about the deficit.
You raised your voice a little.
Yeah, what, what's the end date to get these numbers back in line, end of school this year?
Fine, well, I'm looking at the end of December.
End of December.
Yes. So in, end of December. I believe that the process and the conversion for Infinite Visions will be done.
Thank you.
Okay, so I actually think Stacy's, and Sarah's also, and they both have financial.
Yes.
Uh, so.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll be right up there. Um, okay. So just two of the big areas on page two, or page three, sorry, I forgot, Jim was talking about contracted services and the tuition. So over the summer, we did have four pretty intensive special needs students move into the district. Two were already in added district placements at a hundred thousand plus each. And so that was a cost that we did not anticipate having, you know, in the transportation of those students and a pair of the bus for those students. But the threshold that Harding was talking about, anything over sixty thousand, we will get a portion of that back. So we will be putting, I think the first report was in mid-November. And there's different payout dates, Jim knows those. So we will get a portion of that back. There were a couple of students that we did not anticipate that were in-house, that needed a higher level service. And so those are mixed in there too. The contracted services line, there were a couple of behavior interventionists that were with general education students that then became special education students, so that's a hundred thousand that transferred over to our budget. And then some of that contracted services money lives in the teacher salary line, because it's for special teachers that are contracted through an agency, that that money will eventually get moved to the line that it needs to go. So it does look really bad, but I think once things get moved to where they are, it will look quite as fine. Wow, so those were just the two big areas that I wanted to let folks know sort of what's happening, but that. Okay.
Could I get that in there?
Yeah.
So that offset you see in the salary line is on page two. So there's like three hundred and fifty-two thousand in the special ed teacher salary line. Because we, Stacy used replacement agency as opposed to, and then you have two hundred thousand dollars in health benefits. Because again, we're not paid out those health benefits, so I just.
Thank you.
That's that balance.
Yes.
Yes.
I do have some extra packets that people were not able to print, but Nicole sent out today. Does anybody want one? What Nicole sent out in the email, my reports and documents?
I can just not color it, liner, color it.
Oh, I'm just so.
I printed them out, I just wanted to be sure that I.
Trying to save money.
Not, no.
Oh, okay. So the first report is just the general directors report. I did the chart like I did last year, but I did add a new column in. Percent of IEP students within each school. Just to give you an idea that for the most part, the percentage of special ed students within our school is pretty close. Raptin looks much higher, but they have a very small enrollment number, so their number's going to look really big. Westminster's a little bit higher, but they are really all in that twenty-six to thirty range, so it's pretty evenly spread out among the SU. Some of these numbers are.
For E, C, S, E.
Um, pre-K.
Oh, pre-K.
Yeah, and that number I didn't put a percentage because we have our programs and then all of the partner programs, so to try to figure out, that was a bit much. We do still have some teaching positions open at the middle school. And parent number of open positions at the middle school has jumped a little bit, given some things that have happened in recent weeks. And needing to find some staff or students that are struggling at the moment, so there's, that number is a little bit higher there. We have a lot of referrals still to go through, so even though we're at two ninety right now, that number could substantially increase. And even from the twenty-four referrals that are on this sheet, I probably have ten more that have come in since. So the referrals are coming in quickly and in great numbers, but I don't know at this point, because everybody's sort of in the middle of the process, what that's going to look like. So then, as we go down through the report, we are continuing to do professional development for our parent professionals. We had one today, which was more of an independent sort of online, while my secondary coordinator, Eric Royce Berry, and I had individual meetings with parents to check in and how things were going. We had some great feedback from that, and several parents asked to do it again in the spring, so we will look into being able to do that. They were very happy to have some one-on-one time with us to talk about concerns, or tell us some good things that are happening with the students they're working with. So it was a good, it was a good experience for Lori and I to have with the staff. So that would continue throughout the school year with different topics and different presenters. Targeted monitoring, I'm happy to report that we did very well in cleaning up many of the areas where we did not pass compliance numbers. Unfortunately, for the three-year reevaluation, we missed the mark by one percent. So we are continuing to gather information on three-year revaluations called triennials. And we'll submit that to the Agency of Education in November. Right now, we are on target to be in compliance, so I anticipate we will be out of targeted monitoring by the first of the year. Rules change. It did include something in your packet, it is a lengthy document, it is called. Guidelines for Determining Specific Learning Disability Eligibility. If you're bored some night, take a look at it. It explains the new process. The Agency of Education has put in place for identifying students as special education eligible for specific learning disability, and it tells you what we're doing in schools, and how we're looking at data, what teacher responsibilities are, what special ed responsibilities are, and sort of walks you through our process. But it is a big document, so I'd be happy to come back at a later date and talk more about that if we need to. Some exciting news. Over, I don't know, even when Andy was director. One focus of mine has always been transitions for students on IEPs at the high school level, and making sure that we are getting programming for them, we're getting them out into the community, we're getting support in place for them for after graduation. Due to the work of the high school staff and our focus on that, we have routinely scored a hundred percent on our indicator thirteen. And we're chosen as one of three sites in state to participate in a federal grant called Path Based Partnership. It's a five-year grant, very, very new. We had one of our first meetings yesterday to sort of talk about the expectations, and it's a lot because it's coming from the federal government. But we will start to roll out some information on that as I get more, but it is going to look at post-secondary outcomes. And how we can help support students with plans for after graduation, our students of all levels within special education, and how do we involve our general education, community-based partners in that. So I think it's pretty exciting. When it's all done, we will be a training site for other school districts, and we will be able to go to other schools and help support them with getting started in the process, so I think it's going to be. For the high school. It did include in your packet Vermont's Path Based Partnership Grant Application. Again, it's a very lengthy document, so you can just look at it and see Vermont's vision of how this grant is going to work and how they are saving school. We have cut back on our virtual teachers and service providers. We just still have one here at the high school, and we have. The speech and language pathologist that is seeing students across the district for virtual sessions. In order to fill three vacancies we had within that department. We do still have some contracted employees, but they are on site now. We have one at the middle school. We have special education teacher at Raptin, and then a pair that we recently hired here for our high school classroom. So we are getting more further down the line of having votes in-house. The other thing in my report is something called QBF Safety Care, it's a crisis prevention program. I went in September down to Western Massachusetts for three days to be trained in the program so that I can train pretty much anybody in the district. But it is a different way to look at supporting students with social emotional learning struggles, behavior challenges, that focuses more on prevention versus dealing with a crisis. And so how do we not get to a crisis? So it's a very involved program, and it was developed by behavior specialists, and does connect well with PBIS. So we're going to work on getting our staff trained slowly in that, and hopefully be up and running fully with that by the end of the year. And you can go online and look at Safety Care, you can like, and on the website. The last thing in my report breaks down our added district replacements. Although our placements are extremely expensive, we are still very low in the number of students. When I first came up to the SU as the added district case manager, we had eighty students in each added district. Now I think we got eleven. So for each administration, we have worked very, very hard to build systems within our schools and within our SU to keep our students here and meet their needs here. But there just are some students that are, that need more than we can really provide for them. So that just breaks down what schools we're working with and how many students we have.
What about five oh four? Are you at all involved?
No, that would be Shelley Wilson. Shelley Wilson?
Because this, in our, in our budget, I don't know, in this budget, we have staff, five oh four staff in it.
Yes.
Yeah, we want to hear about.
That, that is a local. Regular ed, so that's local.
The, obviously, the fact that two, the two open positions are at the middle school, I keep. Keep saying, I, I don't know why it is that the middle, the middle school seems to get the short end of the stick, and our kids. And they, they need the full stick.
They are all.
They don't, you know, and, and, you know, I know. I know it's hard, and I, and I guess of the two we have, I guess the three that we have, one of them is from Max.
Yes, but in person.
Which is okay, I mean, obviously, Max was having trouble getting special ed.
Jason.
Thank you, Sheriff. Stacy, help me with the high school.
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm reading this right, so we have five full-time employees for special ed. I want to make sure I'm reading this right. So we have five full-time employees for special ed. Eighty-four active, ten are in referral, which means we put out ninety-four?
Yes.
Okay, so my math on, on eighty-four is that it's seventeen to one for student-to-teaching ratio on that. How does the twelve pairs add into that?
That's just how many pairs we have on staff here at that high school.
They don't count as educators, all right?
Yeah.
So our teacher-to-student ratio for special ed at the high school is seventeen to one?
It's just case load.
Right.
They don't teach seventeen to ten.
Right.
What does that mean?
So case load at the high school around twenty to twenty-five, so they manage twenty to twenty-five students as far as maintaining IEPs. But their classroom, say for English Foundations, could have twelve students in it, and then their guided study has eighteen or twenty students in it. So there's not a kind of average ratio that we'd say that we're teaching on a daily.
So the number could be lower than?
Depends on the class. Some of our special educators push in.
What's that mean, pushing in?
So they're team teaching with a general education teacher for a, um, general education classroom that has a higher number of special ed students.
So there could, there could be some special ed, like in, like, I would say, regular ed class. And then the, the case manager could check in, like buzz around and, uh.
Or work with small groups or teach a lesson. It just depends on what the special educator and the classroom teacher work out is how they want to have that team teaching model.
Okay.
And there's never an instance where special educate, special students in special education are with that teacher all day anyway, so they never have all those kids. Because they have to be in general education maybe.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, two eighty-two teachers at the high school that, that are, they're, are they specialized?
They are not my staff, no.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then my last question is, the age here would has the, um, guidelines for determining SLD eligibility. Never seen that before, that's pretty neat, you know. So, can you, um, so this is a guide of like. Let's say have a new student and you maybe have a question of, you know, where they should be. This is kind of like a, a interview kind of thing?
No, um, so this is a guide I created to explain the rules change to staff and parents if they want it. It's a little heavy, um. But it explains our process. So if you are a student, um, who is having some academic struggles, like where do you start? What is our tier one for you? And then the whole process of how you get to a special education referral. And then once you're there, what does that look like? And what data do we look like or look at? Sort of what is our process? It just explains the nuts and bolts of, of step one to step whatever. That's special education.
Thank you. And then, so you said like, once you're there, but how do you get the kids to out of there? Or are they just there, forever?
What do you mean, just there? Are they in special ed forever?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Do you have numbers of those?
I do not.
I would love to see positive stuff.
I could look.
Maybe next time.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
But you know how she referred to before the triennial evaluation, every three years, anyone who's on IEP gets an. Evaluation to see if they still qualify. So students move out of special education in that term.
So I can.
We do that?
There are several students at the high school right now that we are working to move them from IEP to a federal board. Because they're not accessing any specialized instruction. They're getting, um, what we call guided studies. They're getting support with homework. That's not a specialized need for an IEP requirement. So we're working.
Success stories.
To, yes, but I don't have numbers of those right now. Yeah, but the goal is always to help a student get off an IEP. It's not a, the life sentence.
We're gonna come back to Stacy around budget issue. She's given us a lot of background now and, and a wonderful portfolio. I'd like to move to Sarah, and then I'd like to see other questions for Andy, Jim, the whole team.
Okay.
Especially looking at the budget implications. That's actually before the whole question.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks. Uh, so Andy is supposed to fill out my side show. Raise your voice a little bit for this owl here.
Yeah. Still. Say a lot of y'all, no? Can't see that far. Give you the presenter. Can you see presenter? No, Sarah?
I can't hear any.
You see presenter.
Presenter up there. I can't, I can't see.
Second tab in. Out of curiosity, are teachers liked at the high school?
Like, like.
Like.
Liked.
You should like them.
Right, Sarah.
Do this all day, you're there.
No.
There you go. I'm trying to look up there to see that far.
Um, so this is really my first time presenting to the board. Um, I did come earlier this fall and just kind of gave a small version of what's been happening after school. Um, so I decided to put this slideshow together to really, um, show what's been happening in after-school programs. And go through some of the details so you guys know more about it. Um, so new project, just want to note, uh, last year we had some new logos put together. Um, with a spin on the Wind of Northeast, that's after school and the summer actually have different kids, with different actions going on. Um, and I decided to spin off of what the Wind of Northeast Supervisory Union was using for, um, their mission statement. Um, and really using the same wording around safe community that encourages kindness, perseverance, and cooperation. And our programs aspire to continue to ensure growth and inspire life, inspire lifelong learning. And I found that that was important because it is a continuation of after-school program hours and summer program hours. Um, next slide. So after-school programs, um, some of our programs are safe and nurturing environment for students during those hours outside of school. Uh, it's a place for students to have additional, um, movement opportunities. It provides daily nutritional meals and snacks. Um, it's a place to connect with students from different grades and or schools, like in the summer programs that we centralized this year, so kids got to meet new students. They may not be until middle school. Um, they provide additional academic support. Opportunities for students to work with other adults in the community, including other teachers. Like I have one, um, person that works in Westminster who really loves the after-school program Saxons River, and she drives there to work there because she wants to work with that group of kids. Um, similarly, we hire outside community, um, contractors like Main Street Arts and Craft Nature Museum. We provide, uh, students with, uh, choice and voice and leadership opportunities, and that's really something that's been inspired through twenty-one C. Um, it's a big piece that I can go into more details if you have questions about that. Um, the, we provide a blend of structured activities and clubs that cover academics, sports, and recreations. Such as theater, coding, biking, woodworking, cooking, gardening, dance, and nature club. Next slide. Um, we, um, in the programs, we are working to work with the Wind of Northeast office. With, uh, all of the elementary level schools and middle schools, and then of course myself, and the site coordinators that we have on, on sites. Um, those team, I just mentioned the leadership team, which is, is the, is those site coordinators that we have on each site. Um, we have an active advisory team that I started last year. Um, we seek, um. We make sure that there's easily accessible, um, options for facilities within our district. We provide critical support to students and families in, in our rural community. We provide qualified and qua- qualified and quality staff to support the students' academic growth, social and emotional growth, overall wellness. Um, I have been working to try and make sure there's professional development, um, options. Um, that are available and more and more becoming available, as I'm becoming more involved with what I know about what's. What the state is offering through, through different, um, Vermont After School, twenty-one C, those kind of examples. Um, we serve, uh, middle school, central, Raptin, Saxons River, and Westminster. And I do just want to give a quick update on Raptin. Last time I did go to a Raptin meeting, um, I am working to do, it's not going to be exact after-school programs. But I think we are in a place where we're going to move forward with being able to offer like an extended care, um, option for Raptin. I do have enough parents that have signed up, um, and I, now I'm working on staff. I think I, I think I have it moving forward, so that's exciting for this year. Um, we provide first through eighth grade for after-school programs. Kay is invited to join in January. We provide up to a hundred and fifty days or thirty-two weeks of extended, um, after-school enrichment programs. And they're offered Monday through Friday, three to four forty-five. Um, I figured out that that's about two hundred and sixty-three additional hours if a student is enrolled for every session of after-school programs, which is about thirty-eight days more a school. Not every kid does that, but there are, we do have some, I think, around thirty percent of our kids are, are regular attendees. Um, I'd have to look at it again, it was something a little, little while ago that I looked at. Um, these are our proud students. We have gardening club, art club, cooking club, this is a middle school. Next slide, uh, here's the central, the art, apple harvest project, steam club, next slide. We have read aloud and dance club at Saxons River. Uh, we have main street arts and drama club and biking club at Westminster. And I just want to touch on this, Westminster is a twenty-one C site, um, and they do currently have tutoring in place. Um, that last year it ran Mondays and Wednesdays, which is about to actually start in November, um, at Westminster again. It's offered to students who need additional help with math and P L A. Um, the students are selected, um, through the process of asking grade-level teachers, um, about, uh, referring them. And then those licensed teachers are providing the tutoring services. Um, and then just really quick, last year we had a total of forty-four students enrolled on Monday, and twenty-three of them were being tutored. On Wednesdays, they had a total of thirty-five students, and twenty of them were being tutored. And then I just want to mention that, um, I did try and get tutoring going last year, but it was really tough, um, to find licensed teachers that were interested in providing those services. So it's something I do want to grow, but I have to have the buy-in. Essentially, asking people to come back on, on continuing their day, that's a good piece. Um, and then this is, I just wanted to showcase this, um, we, I started to create a relationship with Main Street Arts last year. Um, and they, we piloted two programs at Westminster and Saxons River where there are six, I think, six to eight weeks of sessions with someone from Main Street Arts. The kids write the play, they, they, they come in with a general idea, and then the kids write it, they come up the script, they come up the costumes, they come up the set. And then there's two community performances where, um, the kids put it on birds for their peers at the end of the school day. And then there's a community performance afterwards. And because I went so well, I've had the, um, opportunity to bring Main Street Arts in to be at all of the schools with the exception of Raptin. Just because of the lateness of it. Um, but, so I do have them coming in, and I'm really excited. That's going to be an opportunity that I'd love any of you to come to. Um, gonna try and make sure it's out there more this year. Um, so you're welcome for those performances. This is a video. You do not need to play it here or later if you want, so it's gonna kind of run you through and make you play it, but you can skip right through it, Andy, thanks. Um, I did recently send out a survey to all the after-school programs, um, families of this year and, and of this summer. Um, I had fifty responses, and there's a lot of questions, but I just want to highlight some of them. Uh, this was during, uh, I just wanted to know how if families were utilizing after-school programs, and of those fifty responses, eighty percent said yes. Next slide. Um, I asked, uh, them to go through reasons why they enrolled in after-school. And then their first reason was extended social and emotional learning opportunities. Um, and then the second one is, uh, extended, uh, childcare, and that's so that the families can work. Next slide. The second reason, um, is extended social and emotional, I'm sorry, enrichment programming. And then the second one to that is the extended social and emotional learning opportunities. Next slide. Um, this took a quick enrollment. I had, I took spring, spring enrollment and this fall as of like last week. And, um, then across from here is set with some goals. Um, the middle school's at seventeen, you can see there's some growth there. And if you look through all of them, there's definitely growth in all of them with the exception of Westminster, but our tutoring has not started. So that will, will definitely change. Um, I do have goals for, um, certainly bringing enrollment up. Each school has its own challenge. Um, and that can end, in order to do that, that there also needs to be an increase in staff, um, in order to have that ratio of one to thirteen. So that's like, it's a great goal. Um, and then I'm not. Uh, in this survey, I had families put in comments. I'm not going to read through all of them, but I do encourage you to definitely read them. Um, I think that I wanted to highlight was, uh, my students have been able to continue to engage with peers in a new environment. And when they prefer social, like, when they prefer social isolation. They are physically active and happy at the end of each day, just expanding their overall growth. We appreciate the extended, extended time as well as we both, as we are both working parents. It's a healthy and safe place for them to be engaged. Next slide. Um, touching on summer, we serve all of the same students. We offered a centralized elementary and middle school programs this summer, which is a little bit new. Offering K through eighth, provided, um, twenty-five days, um, or up to five weeks, um, and it's offered Monday through Friday, eight to four. Um, that's providing students with, uh, up to two hundred additional hours if they're enrolled in all five weeks. Um, and then essentially, we're just, in the summer, we're trying to keep youth on track, and there's so much social and emotional learning that happens during those times as well, because they're in this group. Uh, next slide. This is the middle school. Um, we served sixty-nine students this past summer, been through eighth, and the key field trips were rocking, wreck, rocking and wreck. Echo Lake, Keen Cinema, uh, they went blueberry picking and bowling and look park. Next slide. This is the elementary level. They start, we served a hundred and forty-eight kids, K through six. Uh, field trips were similar to the middle school. I think there's some other ones on there like Opera House, um, and Blackbeard Adventure Cove, mini golf. So they did some similar ones, but added some others as well. Next slide. Again, this is from the summer program, um, about, from families, um, and I'm just gonna highlight this one. The summer program allows for them to stay in a safe zone for summer programming while being engaged in new learning opportunities rather than just being a sitting situation. They come home filled with excitement from their activities they have learned. My children love that they're moving outside, but also continue learning through summer. As parents, it's great for our children to be in the same place, but it's safe, but also creating. This simulation that might not be present in other childcare options. Next slide. Again, similar from the survey, um, there is seventy-six percent, um, uses summer programs. And then top was, uh, the extended childcare, which makes more sense for summer in that way. Next slide. And then top here was, um, for the second choice, it's extended social and emotional learning opportunities. So you see a pattern there with, with the summer and the after-school programs. This is our team. Uh, Sierra's at the middle school, um, up here in the top left. Cam in the middle at Westminster. Tina is Saxons River here on the right top. And then we actually have two post-site coordinators at Central, Heather Murphy Hicks and Tammy. Um, next slide. These are some of our after-school and summer program community partners I'm looking to build, but I came in trying to, after COVID, and like really trying to figure out who, who is doing what. Um, I do plan to add more, but these are some of the ones that we're working right now. Compass School actually sent volunteers to Westminster last year. There was ten kids that came throughout the year, and they just come and help and, and, and look around and, and be part, part of that. Um, and then I wanted to touch on the funding. The currently, um. Bellas Falls Middle School, Central, Raptin, Saxons River for after-school programs are all being funded through the ARPSR. Um, that's through June twenty-four. Uh, Westminster has one more year left of the twenty-one C funds. Um, they can reapply next year, um, in February. Uh, that's something certainly we're looking into. Um, and they, at this point, because of where they are in their grant cycle, they do also have local, um, uh, school budget contributions as well. Um, and then this, I see my typo right there, sorry about that. Um. When then, uh, the summer programs are also going to be funded by ARPSR, and that will end in August of twenty-four. Next slide. Um, so this is basically the end. I'm just, um, coming to you guys tonight to give you a rundown of what's been happening in after-school summer programs. And we're looking to continue them, but obviously everybody's aware of ARPSR ending and really just coming to you guys to show the importance of it. And to start discussing what, um, basically what the district is looking to do to continue to have these programs. Um, happy to discuss more. Now you know my face and can reach out to me. Um, next slide. Um, I also wanted to just let you know that you're more than welcome to come to any of the after-school programs. Just reach out to me and I can make that arrangement. If you want to go to one school, if you want to see all the schools, I can reach out to the site coordinators and make sure, and they can pick up. One of their, I don't know, like there's field trips in the library, or it's Craft Nature Museum in there, or any of those things that you might be interested in. Um, and that's the end of my presentation. Um, so yeah, I just, thank you for letting me go through that and introduce kind of what's been happening in the district. Um, you know, at one point, some of the schools didn't have after-school programs, some were, um, you know, at one point, Bellas Falls Middle School was a twenty-one C. And Westminster was twenty-C, twenty-one C, and Central, I think, had, um. Thank you, YMCA coming in. Um, and so over the last few years, they've all been able to have these programs running successfully. Um, so. yeah, I think at this point, I wanted to introduce, I am, like Cheryl, right? Like Cheryl said, there are pieces around trying to figure out what the funding is going to look like. Um, I do have plans to try and apply to twenty-one C for the Rockingham District. Um, and with that in mind, one of the first steps that comes with that application process is to see if we're ready and if we will be supported. In some cases, with grants like these, there is some funding, but it's not a hundred percent. And they're looking for you to contribute either at, from the beginning or in some cases, um, maybe in year four and five. And from there, um, just trying to figure out how to be, to sustain, be sustainable in the after-school and summer programs. So that's, that's where I'm coming in. Andy, is there anything that you would like to add?
I, I will only add, I mean, the program's been great for our community, including funded majority of all of this is sorry to show through S R funds. Uh, and will continue through the rest of this year. Um, with the S R funds, we were not able to charge families. So this has been a free, um, experience after-school and summer programming has been free for our communities. Uh, and, you know, anything will be brought, whether it's twenty-one C or whatever. Um, there are opportunities to have a, a little bit of a revenue stream back in, uh, because uh, we wouldn't be using those federal funds. So using, that was part of S R, you could put that in charge, uh, for those, those reasons, but, um.
I appreciate you adding that. Thank you. Um, and it is something that I have been looking into in regards to revenue, like just looking into what is the average cost of after-school programs and then events. I need to look into summer a little bit more, um, just looking into how that revenue can come in and, and in some cases, there are benefits to being a licensed site because you can get some subsidies through that. Um, so it's really a new stage for us where I'm coming into this position. Um, but again, like Andy said, we're, we're looking into how to keep it going.
I think you're new to the program, but you, I know the middle school had a twenty-one C program and what, did they not reapply for?
So the twenty-one C, they did have twenty-one C. To my knowledge, I don't know how far back they went, but I know it just ended this June. Um, and in through twenty-one C, as a district, we're allowed to have two grants. So the decision was to try and apply for a Rockingham grant, which will cover the middle school, Central and Saxons River, so that more schools can hopefully benefit from whatever we might be awarded. And then Westminster has their own, which is on a different grant cycle. Like there, they have this year and next year, but will be reapplying for the following year. So they, yes, they were, but but now we're in the process of trying to figure out how to bring everybody in.
So you, there hasn't been an application for Rockingham?
No, it's currently, this is one of the first stages. Um, I, I've worked a little bit with the Rockingham principals and Andy. Um, and then the next step is really to come to your community and your board and let them know that, that you plan to apply and like how, how can we with board as a community to sustain that process with the grants in, in, in addition to.
So these are all, in fact, they're now with the reports and again, they all have financial implications as we move into the budget season. Are there any questions now? Back to Andy, to Jim, Stacy or to Sarah?
Well, this is, this is really kind of a statement or whatever, but, um, the, uh, the Rockingham board got a, a summary, uh, this past month of the MAP tests, the, the state tests that were administered in the spring, I had been put on hold there. The state must, for some reason, they're not really stated. Um, the MAP, the MAP test we got, scores we got, it said basically for the, for the, I think, uh, three through eight, I, I think it's grades three through eight. Uh, I don't think it goes below three, but I think our, our proficiency rate for three through eight was twenty-five percent for W N E S U. Okay. Now we know that all of the kids take these tests and we also know that about twenty-five percent of our kids have I E Ps and whatever. So, you know, to expect a proficiency rate of a hundred percent, of course, is, is fluid. But I, when you have a proficiency rate of twenty-five percent, uh, I can understand why you're getting these referrals for special ed. I mean, it's, 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 it's shocking to me that it's that low. And I think that, you know, all of these programs and things that are, you know, it's a wonderful, what you've done here, thanks to S R. But the, the, the concern I have as a board member is I want my kids to achieve acad, some academic success. I want them to learn. And, uh, and the social and emotional and all that stuff just goes along with it, but, but we, you know, we, we really, as, as boards and as administrators, you know, how are we going to come to grips with this underachievement of our kids on tests? It's just, it's shocking. And the high school doesn't have any tests. Uh, I guess a state test would have covered.
Thank you.
Nine grades.
We need MAP test in.
Or do you have MAP test? I don't know what the, I don't know what the, uh, MAP test results for high school. But anyway, so it's sort of Stacy, I'm looking at you because it's all like.
But I also want people to remember that the MAP test is one snapshot. It is not a, a profile of the student. It's one look. And if you're a bad test taker, you know, you might not do so well. That, that's not an accurate view of how kids are performing. So I think we have to, to be careful to look at multiple data points, um, to really gauge how our students are succeeding. Um, you know, I understand from the view, the MAP scores are low, but I think it really, I don't think it paints a really clear picture of what's happening personally. And I wouldn't say that's why I'm getting a lot of referrals. Because a lot of referrals that we are getting are about emotional behavior issues that either.
Okay, that, that, like the test scores, when it gets into middle school, it gets, it's worse though.
Yes.
Three, four is better. It helps the A average. And so when I see that, you know, that we're not staffing our middle school, it's like, gee.
But I do have to say, yes, we give us multiple positions at the middle school. Um, but that team is servicing all students with all of the I E P requirements. We're not dropping services. We're not, um, leaving kids kind of hanging out there. That team is working very, very hard to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of the kids. And we are working hard at our end to make sure that we get two more staff. I have one in the interview process right now. Um, that I have a meeting on Thursday and if that goes well, I'll be getting a committee together to do a formal interview for the middle school. So there are things in the works. Um, is it sustainable? No. Because our, our team is doing more than what they should have to do, but we are meeting student needs and we are supporting them in that setting again.
Yeah, I think given the nature of the agenda and the number of things we still have to do, we should wrap this up with zero thanks to all of you. One other question to Jim, where you had, and there were two things. And you do think that everything will be in place with all the new data in the new system recording? And if that's true, right? And secondly, the current, uh, year that we just closed, the audit. Where are we with that then?
Um, it hasn't changed and we're still trying to lock in the auditor into. The only thing the auditor has given me is they said as of November thirtieth, we will have an hand, uh, on audit that is complete.
So maybe if you hear, thank you. There's still no track for that?
Yes.
Okay. You know, should we go through hands?
Oh, my. That's one question. Uh, it will be in your report. Maybe this was what James was getting to. Uh, under the, uh, September twenty-twenty-three update, as you've mentioned, that the assessment data for the students from the spring of twenty-three is currently in progress. Correct. What was the timing of the placement? It wasn't wise or something related. Um, so it, it in the September when I did that, it wasn't bargained with an expense since, uh, we are in the process. I believe, um, scores will be going home faster to this month. Uh, so we're not, um, one hundred percent sure. Uh, that was the information that was provided to me, um, but had something to do with how we were drawing the data. I believe we sent it that morning. And what grades are coming to now, um. Three through nine, right? No, eleven.
Eleven, very nine, eleven.
Three, three, nine, and then eleven. Damn.
And I would refer everybody to Andy's report and certain detail. I encourage everybody to follow the links as well as making the report. There's so much good information there. And I'd like to highlight the zero that showed up on the S R spending, like we spent every, oh, this is the, uh.
Yeah, you're jumping ahead from the S R final, um, figures, but, um.
Oh, I am.
Yeah, so, no, no, it's okay. If you do want me to, that's an hour and one hour waiting.
Um, why don't we do that? But I might let you guys go with it. You're welcome to stay.
I have to say.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
And we shouldn't normally go out of order, but I think, I think we could do that. No action, action required either.
So just in, in our S R funds, there's this S R two that we're talking about. S R two flows as of September thirtieth of this year. So, um, and then we have what's called a liquidation period, usually about ninety days. Uh, sometimes that gets extended a little bit, so uh, right now we have the liquidation period of that grant. What that means is everything that we wanted to use the money for had to be allocated, um, and have a purchase order basically rounded by September thirtieth. So, uh, we were able to do that. Um, so we'll see that there's still some encumbrances through that, um, report. But those are funds that are being spent, expended during this liquidation period. Um, one of the things we were able to do, and Shirley Lynch, she works in Jim's office, she's our grant, um, manager on the backend. We were able to actually move some of the stress, some of the dollars that we were, we originally allocated to ARF, uh, grant, we're now working under and moved them back into the S R two because ARF went over the whole three years. I just tried to quickly explain this. ARF went over the whole three years and S R two, as it ended, it start, it goes until September. So any funds that we expended between July first and September thirtieth, we could pull. If there was like a salary that was in ARF, we could pull that and put it in the S R two. And so that way we can spend those funds. And then those funds that are now available, we can reallocate into things like data back system or some of our other bigger projects that so we're not having to, uh, pull a bunch of logos or something like that. So, yeah, it was really exciting to see, you know, um, but I think that's, again, going back to different invasions. By being able to finally get these things in place and having the account codes, that we can really start accounting for variable spending dollars during the months.
You know, the last important, we had been worried that we might lose some, being the chance to spend some of these money. So I just really commend the staff and you and all of the team. You're doing mental work together.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's go to another topic if we can. With bylaws, the bylaws, you know, we've had discussions about. We have bylaws for the W, any issue we were out of date. We had a committee that met several times and, uh, we had everything go to legal review, actually board and board demand, because we had additional questions. So we sent out to you today those revised bylaws. And I think that, uh, yeah, James, you're going to have one area that you might want to make a comment on.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
It was in, uh, an email that came out lately after we, I think, from Nicole. So we were all sent the revised bylaws and I know that, uh, Priscilla has a couple proposed amendments. I'll make you a quick one. We don't vote to approve one here, but I would like this board to vote to approve sending them to each of the member districts because it is the member districts that needs to take action on her. And then nobody come arguing about the opposite for the review of the issue. Um, while James takes a look at those, I am going to ask you to.
Try to get, you know, one of the things you talked about was getting stuff out three days before the meeting. I mean, I mean, I saw one from Nicole Lake. It was the, uh, evaluation process for the superintendent. So this must come out even later than that. Uh, so.
They came out there three days ago, but this one came out.
Miss Max, do you? Um, just, just two great words to be added. Uh, one, two, three, uh, H four, uh, where it says, it's just supervisor, you shall enumerate, right? We need, we're bored.
I'm sorry, which page and which article?
On the four. It's on article, uh.
Nine or eight?
Right above. It's a third on the page. It, this is a question from the board.
We seem to have a whole different number system. So obviously the article.
Uh, article.
Eight. Okay. I got it.
Uh, the, uh, second paragraph, uh, second sentence, just add a board, supervisor, you, for, and shall enumerate, right? Because it was you, this supervisor.
Shall enumerate. In other words, let me understand. The supervisor is, um.
It, it just corrects it. So it starts board instead of just supervisor.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, got it.
The next, uh, one, article nine, first chair, a meeting, a board meeting, it should say, or, and board committee. I believe.
One more, I'm digging right here. Okay, article nine, you're saying.
Chair of board meeting and what committee made this.
Chair of board meeting and or committee meeting. Okay.
That just, that just makes it, for both of them, easy. Okay. Um, going to article, uh, fourteen. I, I didn't realize until I read it, it says, or in the last sentence. It's too general because it means that we could just reevaluate in any kind of way or any.
You're saying as, as soon as practically, the board
shall return any surplus with the supervisory meeting budget for the previous fiscal year to the member districts based on our portioned assessments. That way they're taking the assessments they've been done and getting back based on what was taken, rather than just deciding how they want to do it. Policies are being, don't have policies quite that way. So I'd like to change the article. The board is responsible for policies. That's one of our, we've been, been trying to do. So starting with that sentence. Policies shall be drafted and developed through the policy committee as deemed necessary for the proper conduct of board and supervisory meeting business. That way anybody could bring a proposal. For example, at one of our meetings, the nurse brought a proposal to us. And we looked at it and worked on it and changed it. And if you read something, any board member can print something and then we can do. Then it comes back to the board.
When you say anybody, help me understand that. So, so you're saying that, you know, I understand about the proper conduct of board and supervisory meeting business, but what you introduced that.
Policies shall be drafted and developed through the policy committee. That's the way they're done.
Through the policy committee.
Right. As deemed necessary for the proper, on the board and supervisory business.
Okay.
I'm going to say again, all of this is not illegal. All of this is going to improve. I think this change is making reasonable when it will change the term. So I'm, I'm okay with this. Are there any others?
That was, I mean.
Um, James, I thought we might want to speak to, uh, the executive committee section that has to do with.
Well, I, I, I think it's unfair to expect me to. I mean, I had a bunch of comments on these things. So far, everything has stayed the same. Uh, with one exception, which I think is, makes it even worse. So.
Which article?
Well, I haven't had a chance to read.
Oh, no, no. I thought you said it was awful, something.
Well, the, uh, the thing on the executive, first of all, the, my feeling on the executive thing, I don't care if we have an executive committee. The question is, what duties and responsibilities does this board want to transfer from the board to an executive plan? Okay. I personally don't want to transfer any responsibility to the executive committee. So I think before we draft all this stuff about an executive committee, the board needs to decide whether they want one or not. The executive committee that, that was referred to in. The executive committee that, that was referred to in Andy's contract, as, as we now know, was a terror. It was a myth.
I don't know that it was a terror. It was in a sign.
Well, it was a myth. It wasn't, it wasn't a board of the, of the W N E S U. It wasn't, it was never an appointed committee in the W N E S U board. So again, my feeling is, as a board member, uh, I wanna be involved in evaluation of the superintendent. So, and, uh, so what, what duties and responsibilities does this board want to take from them and transfer to an executive committee? If we, if we've got a slate of things that we want an executive committee to do, that would be a reason for having an executive committee. If we don't, then there's no reason to have an executive. So that's, that's number one. Number two is, uh, if, if you have an executive committee, okay, it, it should be of the membership of the board, not to the chairs of the other boards. Okay, it ought to be a committee that this chair of the W N E S U selects. Basically from, if the, if, let's say, the, let's say we wanna transfer evaluating the superintendent. So we come to the, to setting up the executive committee and we say, well, we know the executive committee is trying to evaluate superintendent. Who on this board would like to be on the executive, be on that committee? That would make sense to me. It was, because there might be board chairs that don't really feel that great about evaluating people or something. So I think in the last draft, by the way, it just said the executive committee would be, uh, uh, no less than three members, it would be appointed by the, uh, by the chair. Uh, so anyway, I think, I think that should be discussed and voted on by our board, whether we want an executive committee before we try to finalize this.
James, I think if I'm reading this correctly, it's covering what you're saying, even though you don't like the word executive committee. It says that if the constituent boards or their designees, which is a person within the board.
No, it's a designate of the chair of, of the other board.
I.
It's not of this committee.
I would like to make a motion that we table the bylaws until people have had adequate time to reach them, so.
I'll second that motion.
That are almost.
I, already, yeah, already, the proposal on the table, most on the table is to, uh, table the discussion of the bylaws. How do you vote?
You're, you're.
We've got a forum anyway.
You're calling with down there, Hardy.
Let me just say, this is a pointing confirmation. Uh, James, you were in the most recent meeting with Karen, with, with others about the bylaws. We've gone through this numerous times. Most of your changes are here, the one I crawled on, you would speak to this executive committee, because it is not what you proposed, but everybody else thought this made sense. I think it's fine to bring it to the whole board with affirmative meaning. We could, however, we won't tonight, but we, because we've already tabled it. You could vote on it, but it does say a supervisor you then may establish an executive. And then it does also say that this board needs to establish what the responsibilities are, and we haven't done that yet. So we need to do that as well. It's, uh, it's tabled and we'll bring it back. Uh, I think you don't really have to vote on something. Do you, all right, all those in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, okay. So the next, thank you, no problem, I appreciate it. Uh, the next item is actually, uh, about the superintendent's evaluation process. And so I did send out a document and James can actually got both of these after our last committee meeting, because I sent them this, this follow-up. Uh, for your view. Including.
I got this. I didn't get this, I didn't get a file.
She sent these, these out to us a long, long time.
That's all right, let's just get it in. So once the, uh, executive committee with representation, Dr. Karen and James, who wanted to be a part of the evaluation process, we talked through this process and came up with what you see on this. Right in that. And all it really does is describe a process and a timeline uh, for doing something that we're contractually responsible for, and it involves a variety of constituents with all of that. So if you look at the proposed evaluation process and timeline on the back of the one page which I sent you, you'll see that the committee members, um, met on October third. We reviewed the process, this is when I sent this document out to the committee, uh, the meeting of October ninth. And now here we are tonight, just posing this process to the full board. The next step would be the committee to develop and draft three sixty evaluation document for everyone to look at. I will say that my, your opponent of three sixes, I see down with them, James, you may have some questions about them, but I think our next step is to draft a document that could be used and will have a chance to discuss. That's really all, uh, I'm proposing now. And the, the rest of the steps take us through really what our contractual obligation is to complete a six-month report by the end of the year and then come back to the full board, uh, with that in mind and in general. So, let's see. We could have a motion on the floor to implement this process. Or we can just agree that it exists. So move, change, you, the team. So the motion on the floor is to implement the, uh, draft superintendent evaluation process that is described in this memo. I think we'll agree, any discussion? Here, it's a lot. And I don't agree on a lot of the pieces to have here. This is your dot com. I'm sorry, I can't really get off. Oh, okay. Well, Jeff.
Um, all that you have down here is a lot, and it's all good. My question and concern is, how are we gonna manage? The management.
I think that the, the executive committee and the evaluation committee takes responsibility. I think everybody has an opportunity to participate. I think rise the chair is so responsible, to make sure we complete our contractual obligation. So I'm not put off by, uh, responsibility. Just bring it up. Thank you, because I think it's important. That's really, that's it. It'll take some time to implement this very quickly. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then all those in favor of the motion, which is to implement this policy, uh, we start with Hardy.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, all those in the room, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
We have, uh, some action needed in the executive session. Uh, we might do those things that don't require executive session.
Yeah, I apologize when you asked for it and then it's issued, no, Dan has to move that down.
Right.
So if we could, I would just, I could make it a little better.
Would, uh, it doesn't change the concessions. I think we're only saying different, I think, probably. Why don't we go ahead and go into the executive session and we'll be out for, I would say, fifteen minutes. And then we'll come back and finish the policies, whatever, but.
I give me a minute for people to.
Back TV and others watching, we're just wanting to be in executive session for about fifteen minutes, seven thirty-nine AM. We'll do that. All right, we're back in open session at seven forty-seven PM. I'll ask if there's any, uh, action that we can take out of the recent executive session.
Yeah, I move that, uh, that these school-based positions, uh, from the various, uh, districts or town boards, uh, uh, budgets, we move those employees, we move, uh, to the S U, uh, for their employment.
An assessment back to the districts, we're in our relevant districts.
You wanna add that? Yeah, maybe the cost of the position is with the, uh, charge back, recess back to the, uh, uh, to the boards that, uh, utilize the service.
There's a motion on the floor, any discussion? Uh, Hardy, can I be both, please?
Aye.
I.
Yes, yes.
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 Yeah, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely. And now, all right, we have two, uh, policies.
So, uh, yes, I would move to approve policy D twenty-two selection driver materials and D twenty-three selection instruction materials, both were warned on nine twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and cover, um, let's see, we collect and cover, um, policies that we had previously found, um, seven to four and five, that have been updated to, um, meet the new requirements that we need to be able to do materials throughout the districts and a lot of, uh, if there's any questions, we have you somewhere second.
Yes, I don't know if it's a question, but it's a comment. And it was just that I was reading, um, I was reading in about, um, the state board of education having, um, diluted the task force that they had put together to describe what discrimination meant. And, um, but, so I, I, I approved these, but I want to just note that aligned with the standards approved by the state board of education is, um, fine, but I hope we have a conversation a little bit about, um, how they sent out to a working group to come up with a description of what it should look like in terms of what we do in our schools and how we support and the state board of education, um, do the unit frankly. And so that's all I wanted to say. I'm happy about what this is, but I have a few explanation points about that.
Thank you, any, any other discussion? All right, then let me ask, is a motion on the floor to approve the two policies presented by, uh, Priscilla? Hardy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yeah, okay, thank you.
There are a lot of questions.
Andy, could you make some? Just at the same time, it will be a policy, yes, Tuesday, all right? Also needing to be held next Tuesday, I have five, I have five thirty. And the supervisor and the supervisor. Thank you, it's important, it's important for Tuesday and Friday. Thank you. For a quick. Andy, can you make a couple of comments about the budget plan?
Yeah, so, um, I actually left those notes at home, back in the office. But, um, we are, um, in the midst of finalizing some things, uh, with Jim. Um, our biggest task was to get our house in order, just making sure all the account codes, uh, are aligned for this year. Uh, we met, uh, the finance committee, uh, a week ago and our task, um, to come back next meeting with, um, our asks uh, around like if there's any new employees, you know, around S R folks, um, and stuff like that, have that ready, um, so we can do it. Uh, we've set a deadline or a timeline of trying to be, uh, back to this board with, um, a, uh, proposed budget by the end of November, uh, given the, the first week of December, uh, so, um, so we are gonna be working diligently to get, actually, um, trying to get to a point that we're on time so that December, and if you need to, you can go into January, if you're in a low board, so you'll have time to prepare. Because you gotta get your, um, budget by the end of the week.
Well, case, Westminster or the Woodlands?
Westminster's a little accelerated, so we're gonna use their timeline, because that'll push everybody else, so, um, but, uh, we know we've got a little bit of wig.
Okay, we're moving to director's comments, and let me just insert, um, that the date and time of the next meeting and a special meeting on the day of first, a special meeting at six o'clock. Then we are hearing from the attorney, Heather Lynn, on hazing, harassment and bullying. Just to give us.
What is she on?
Hazing, harassment, bullying, um, part of the law and it's something, Andy, I made a couple of comments about why this isn't.
So, uh, just one, this is, uh, part of what we want, we all wanted to do with the, uh, board training, the chair training, who needs more targeted training, um, for you all. Um, but the reason why, um, we call H H B or hazing, harassment and bullying is so important, and title nine, I will add that that is part of it, is, uh, for you all, it's the liability piece. Uh, we take it very, very seriously, um, and we're very diligent about how we approach it. Uh, but we sometimes get involved in some of these situations that will come to you as board members that you need to address. And, uh, and so for you, in your understanding of board members, how to, um, navigate and understand and deal with what your limitations are, but also what your, what you're, you're required. Uh, because sometimes it could end up in a hearing that you will have to be a part of. So, uh, like I said, some we take very seriously. Uh, we invest a lot with our administration, um, we meet monthly with, um, Heather Lynn, um, as a, as a team to go over things. Um, all of our administrators have been involved in, uh, ongoing training, uh, H H B and Title Nine. We just had it, uh, yesterday, a three-hour session with, um, Heather Lynn. Um, and so, uh, but it's something we're always trying to get better at. Um, and, uh, we just want you all to be very much informed, because it's, it's changing, it constantly changes. And we're hearing right now there's a Title Nine change, um, so appropriating, we don't know when that change is gonna happen, but it may affect, uh, the scope of how broad or how limited, um, our view could be as a group.
So it's a way to help, uh, board chairs need our annual requirement, uh, for eight hours. Uh, this would be valuable. At the same time, I think it's helpful for any of the board members who might be able, uh, to, to participate. And our next regular meeting is the regular fifteen. So with that, directors, um, in the first quarter, no problem. I'm gonna jump to Hardy.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Jason.
I think that the superintendent and the team have a lot of work to do for the budget, based on what we're hearing from Jim and, and, uh, all the S R folks that are coming off next year and how it's gonna trickle down to each one of the member schools. It's gonna be very challenging for you and to get us, each of the schools, that information so we can properly budget. So wish it best of luck.
I'm set.
We accomplished a lot tonight, and thank you to all the board members. But I would like at this time to keep in mind all of the people around the world that are just in a, in a much worse situation. And any of us here in Vermont, we hear a lot about Israel, Palestinians, or people of those sides that are really wonderful people. Uh, Ukraine, um, and Washington really, so maybe some of that is there and hopefully then can start some positive things next year. And a lot of those, whether it's Trump or, besides those places, so keep those people in mind, prayers for all of them. Um, young men, you know, your IRA, people who are like, I'm just there, because those always said, oh, I pray for world peace. Well, just give them as much chocolate as is free and hopefully our home, our home and button, just give back for that really.
I appreciate it, honestly. Just now, thanks.
No problem.
Kevin?
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, thanks to each of the, so, Sarah, for all of the earnest, um, service. Okay, well, thanks to each of you, so certainly for all of the earnest, um, service and willingness. And good night, everybody. We'll hear that, seven fifty-eight.